Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our July 6, 2022 organizational meeting annual. And I would like to congratulate and introduce our new superintendent, Mr. Kevin Scanlon. I'd also like to introduce our newest board member, Jen Solomon. And I would ask that we all rise and say the pledge, and if Mr. Scanlon can lead us, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was to keep us on our toes, like with Lego. Okay. Three changes in the meeting agenda. Do we have this? No changes, good. Okay, so now we are going to do four, administration of oaths. Administration of oath of office to newly elected board member, and that would be Jen Solomon. If you can please go to our district clerk, she's going to read you your oath and you will sign.
Can you just hold up your hand, please? Do you, Jennifer Solomon, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Board of Education according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations. Can you just sign right here? Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Oh, I forgot Brian Biscari. I'm so sorry. Brian Biscari, our new assistant superintendent, let's give him a round of applause. I really. Okay. All right. Four B, nomination and election of president of the Board of Education 2022, 2023.
At this where Vinny and stuff?
You know, I'm sorry. Like Vinny's been here, so I just like. He's like, oh. You're next, Vinny. You forgot, I know.
Please hold up your hand, right hand. Do you, Vincent Viso, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Board of Education according to the best of your ability?
Yes, I will.
How lefty, remember?
Congratulations.
Okay. Four B, nomination and election of president of the Board of Education 2022, 2023, and administration of oath of office to president. So before I throw out the nomination and vote on this, I just want to say that I have been hon- I was honored and privileged to be the board president this past year. And I am throwing out the name of Sue Rosenzweig to be the future president, 2223. Can I have a motion? Motion? Second? All in favor? Okay, motion passes, congratulations. Great job.
And I just want to say a big thank you to you because you had a rough, rough year, and you did it with grace, so thank you.
Sue, you just have to come over here. Hold up your right hand, please. Do you, Susan Rosenzweig, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and faithfully discharge the duties of president of the Board of Education according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, right to work, huh? Okay, so this takes us to four C. Nomination and election of vice president of the Board of Education 2022, 2023, and administration of the oath of office to vice president. Do we have a nomination for vice president? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, congratulations, Vinny.
Do you, Vincent Viso, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and faithfully discharge the duties of vice president of the Board of Education according to the best of your ability?
Yes, I do. Where, right here?
Congratulations.
For D, nomination and election of district clerk pro tem 2022, 2023, and administration of oath of office to district clerk pro tem. I would like to nominate Deanna Bevelinka for this position. Do we have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations, Deanna.
Hold up your right hand, please.
Yes.
Do you, Deanna Bevelinka, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk pro tem for the Board of Education according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Just sign right here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And for E, we will turn it over to Ms. Germano.
This is administration of oath to the office of the superintendent of the school for Dr. Kevin Scanlon. Can you please hold up your right hand? I, Dr.
Hi, state your name.
You state your name.
I, Dr. Kevin Scanlon, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of Three Village Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Moving on to five A, appointment of district clerk 2022, 2023, and administration of the oath of office to district clerk. I get to do that? Do you, Inger Germano, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk for the Board of Education according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Germano will take us, beginning with six A, please.
Okay, this is a resolution for the statement of assurances and disclosure of interest for the Board of Education members. It was sent to our legal counsel and was approved. There was no conflicts. Designation of board member liaison and standing subcommittee positions. So the board has decided that the liaison assignments to the different schools, Deanna Bevelinka will be the liaison to Arrowhead, Dr. Jeffrey Kerman to Minnesotki, Vincent Viso to Mount Elementary, Jennifer Solomon to Nessa Cake Elementary, Shari Lee to Satorke, Susan Rosenzweig to Jelena's, Irene Gish to Murphy Junior High, and Warford Memorial High School will be Jennifer Solomon. For the subcommittee assignments, the audit committee, the chairperson is Shari Lee, Vincent Viso, and Jeffrey Kerman. Facilities, chairperson will be Jeffrey Kerman. Trustees will be Vincent Viso and Irene Gish. The policy committee, chairperson will be Deanna Bevelinka. Trustees will be Susan Rosenzweig and Jennifer Solomon.
Thank you.
The designations and time and place of the, for, see, designation, the time and place of the Board of Education meetings, they are listed on the policy and on the website. It starts at 7:30 PM, and it's at North Country, North Country 100 Suffolk Avenue in Stony Brook. And those are the three resolutions.
Thank you. We don't need to vote on those, correct? We do, okay. So may we have a motion to approve? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? No abstentions? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to seven A, Jack Blough. Do we have any questions or comments specific to this? We don't have a copy in front of us, so this is. This is what was presented. At the last meeting.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if you had a copy.
Okay.
That's not in my purview.
So.
Yeah, so the plan, the plan, you have obviously the same amount of time to look at the plan as the public will. But again, you'll have the option to vote on it or disapprove it at the August meeting. But we'll have more than the 30-day requirement by law for the public to put their input into the plan. And again, we always welcome any input from the public. You know, and just a little bit about for some of the newer members, the district-wide plan does not have the confidential information that the building plans have. The building plans have, you know, cell phone numbers, relocation places that we don't really want to talk about right now because obviously it would give the edge to someone that wanted to commit some sort of act against us. So it's a generic plan. Again, we did update the mental wellness piece, which again is a very, very important part of our posture here at Three Village with some of the other hard, infrastructure-hardening things that we have done. All the players have been updated, you know, with our new superintendents and some of the, and your board members, some of the principal changes are in there as well. So the public has a chance to look at it, and we'll accept any comments, and we welcome those.
So it's up on the website currently?
No, it'll be on the website after today.
Okay.
It goes up tomorrow.
And the instructions are on there if anybody wants to make comments?
Correct.
Yeah, so last year we did, in the past day, we were putting it in August, right? We were posting it in August, and it was coming very close to the beginning of the school year. So this year it decided to start earlier in July, and they're starting days. It's an email address that'll go directly to Mr. Blough.
Yeah, I welcome that. We don't get a chance to let the public participate, but I really want to, I really want to hear their input on the plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, thank you so much. Okay, moving forward, beginning at eight, we're going to attack many pages of this tome by consent agenda, so if I could entertain a motion, please, to address these. Okay, second? Okay, and we shall begin, and I'm going to let each of the cast of characters go on their own. I believe we're going to start with Ms. Germano.
Okay, so for item B, it's just the minutes to June 15th. Item C, authorization and destruction of cast ballots. And D, of unused ballots. So they're the ballots from last year, but there's no conflict or any issues. We have the, we need a resolution to pass, to pass a resolution to destroy those old ballots. The MS Clark-Larberry, that's for the upcoming budget vote. The district generally handles the vote for the library. Appointment of board registration, that's for upcoming registration for voting registration. And that's all for mine.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson, you're going to jump in now?
Dasza Coordinator is.
Ms. Das, sorry, Dr. Biscari.
Yes, this is just the appointment of our annual Dasza Coordinator for the 2223 school year. Okay, then the next group are mine. The appointment of district treasurer, our recommendation is to keep same treasurer, no change in that, and deputy district treasurer. The deputy district treasurer carries no stipend, that's just to fill in in case the treasurer's not here. Same thing, those are district employees. The district claims auditor is an independent CPA firm, Serenian Associates. They've been doing our claims auditor, claims auditing for a couple of years. They've done an excellent job. The list of school district appointees are positions such as purchasing agent. Again, that one has no additional stipend. The treasurer's for our allied accounts for Warford, Melville, Jelena's, and Murphy. The compensation is as indicated in the TBTA contract. Also, records management officer, records access officer, and records appeal officer. Those are the school district appointees. The internal auditor is a separate CPA firm, that's Norrock Smith. Recommendation is to keep them. M is the independent auditor, that's the third separate CPA firm, that's EFPR. This is in accordance with the request for proposals that we did in February of 2020. The claims administrator for workers' compensation, our recommendation is to keep the same firm, right risk management that we've had for a number of years, they do a nice job. The appointment of district representative for the Suffolk School Employees Health Plan, that's myself, that's the health plan that we belong to with a couple of other school districts. This would appoint me as, in the past, as the district representative to the board of trustees. There's no additional compensation for that. P is the appointment of security management consultant, that's Mr. Blough. And we all know Mr. Blough and the incredible job that he does. State aid specialist, this is the company that we use to review all of our state aid data. No, no change to that contract. And that brings us to, I believe, Dr. Dubrasky.
Yes, sir, thank you. S is the appointment of the Title IX officer, so this is a recommendation that we do every year to appoint myself as the district Title IX officer.
Okay, and then we also have R and T, just going back one. Commissioner's regulations require us to appoint a data protection officer for the district along with the appointment of a Section 504 compliance officer as well.
U is the appointment of the substance use-related service coordinator. We do this every year since 2019. This is an appointment for appoint person to distribute any substance use-related materials. Next is the appointment of the school physicians and school medical inspector. We are, we are again contracting out Dr. Sussman as our chief medical officer. His services, the cost of his services did not go up.
W is the appointment on committees of special education for the 2223 school year, so there were people that were listed on that for the district committees as well as the building subcommittees.
Next is a recommendation for the service agreement between industrial UI services and Three Village to handle unemployment claims. Prices remain the same.
Why is designation of banks that we use, no change, JP Morgan, Chase Bank, Flushing Bank, and Webster Bank? Impartial hearing officers, is that Dr. Biscari?
Sorry about that. So this is just authorization to designate impartial hearing officers for the 2223 school year. This would be the board in between meetings making a recommendation for, or designating an impartial hearing officer.
The official newspapers, we're recommending keeping the same, Newsday, Village Times Herald, and Long Island Business News. Signatures on checks, same thing, no change. School board members, oh, school board membership, that's you, Inger.
School board membership, we decided to, we're going to have the same as last year, the three, now so Suffolk, School Boards Association, NISPA, and also Scope. We are the only one that's not on the list that we didn't participate in last year is the National School Boards Association. And the prices are the same, the fees are the same as they were last year, they're still frozen.
The petty cash funds, no change. They're all $100 except for the summer rec program is 500. And the reason that's so high is mainly because of the travel camp. Sometimes they need cash for some of the trips that they go on. The breakfast and lunch program, that's just the annual recommendation. And also, our recommendation is, well, kind of required to increase lunch prices by 20 cents. And that goes in accordance with what the federal breakfast and lunch reimbursement is. It's known as paid equity. We can't charge less than what we would have gotten for a free lunch. As of right now, there is, there is no word on the federal government extending free lunch for everybody into next school year. We, of course, hopefully that will happen, but we don't know. So this, this is the required 20 cent increase for the paid equity. Item FF is to participate in cooperative bids through the Long Island School Nutrition Directors Association. GG is the contract with MS Clark Library for library services. Okay, that brings us to.
Okay, this is HH is the approval of the impartial hearing officers, so it's basically to adopt the roster of impartial hearing officers that's provided by New York State.
The authorization to sign stack forms, stack is the system for tracking and accountability. It's basically for our special needs students, and this authorizes the assistants who pretend for educational services to sign those, those reports. The policies that were for renewal, no change. It's for investments, purchasing, purchasing authority, and use of cell, district-owned cell phones. And the agreement, the list, well, we'll see a couple of items on. The list of district positions that required use of district cellphone. These policies, no change to them, they just need to be reauthorized each year by the board. The Omni 403B Services Agreement, this is the company that we use to administer our 403B, which is a tax, voluntary tax-deferred annuity program for our employees. There's a lot of IRS regulations, that's what we use this company for. As I mentioned, the next item LL is the job titles requiring district cellphone. MM through QQ are the property tax exemptions that the board has previously authorized for veterans, Cold War veterans, persons with disabilities and limited incomes, voluntary firefighters, and ambulance workers, and partial exemption for senior citizens. No change in these, we just need to, new requirement from the town of Brookhaven is that we, the board approves these each year. Surplus textbooks, we just have a number. have a number of textbooks for either classes that are, that are no longer useful. Surplus equipment, we just have two items from Jolinas, a radio alarm saw and a refrigerator. Donations, we have, I believe, it's just one donation from the Sittoket PTA for arts and education programs. And it is, oh, I don't have it. It's one for, I'm sorry, I don't have the... 5755, okay, from the Sittoket PTA, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. I thought I had it in here. Well, I'll get that. The UU is the approval of settlement agreement and release in the action of Dominic Baldi. That is a case that we had previously discussed with the board. This is the settlement agreement on that. The next items areVV and WW are special education tuition contracts for this, for the new year. Okay, XX, that's Dr. Dubrasky's.
Yes, sir. XX is a recommendation for the service agreement between Seneca Consulting and Three Village to oversee the Affordable Care Act compliance and the IRS regulations that go along with it.
YY? Dr. Biscari?
Okay, this is the approval of superintendent's hearing officers for next year, as well as ZZ, which is the approval of district committees and task forces for the 2223 school year.
If I may for one moment, the committee list that we provided you has an update to it. One is the literacy committee, which is a combination of the reading and writing committees coming together. So it's no longer going to be two separate committees, it's going to be one committee. In addition, there's a new committee being proposed to the board that we discussed prior, that this is called the strategic planning committee, and we would like to follow the process that is in board policy for the vetting of members of the committee. The committee's charge will be to look at the issues of start time, school configuration, particularly with looking at our ninth grade potentially going to the high school, sixth grade potentially going to a middle school model, and a examination of our elementary configuration. In addition, the program review committee under Dr. Biscari's charge will be taking a look at several key programs that came from some of the discussions through our budgetary process this past year, including foreign language in the elementary schools, our math training program that Dr. Rinaldi had initiated, some focus on standards, there's several next-generation standards changes in a lot of departments, and a potential return of the house plans in the junior high schools in the near future.
Okay, we're up to the triple letters. So AAA is the professional development plan update. Every year we have to submit this to the state and it's being submitted for the 2223 school year.
Mrs. Rosenzweig, triple B to triple P are all individual contracts. I believe you could take that as a, as its entirety, because they're all individual contracts for either administration, abstract, confidential employees, if you'd like to do that. Triple Q then is, we are recalling an excess English teacher to come back due to a full year leave of absence. Triple R is the approval of the summer salary schedule for the summer travel camp, as that was not happening last year, it is happening this year thankfully. Triple S is an approval of stipulation and general release between the employee that we discussed in the exact session and Three Village School District. Triple T, instructional. So we have, we have some instructional things going on. We have 11 instructional resignations, three leaves of absence. We have the appointment of several part-time and full-time teachers, two school psychologists, a school social worker, additional athletic supervision, a variety of clubs, supervisors, proctors, trainers, department chairs, and summer employees. What are we up to? Triple, triple U. Triple U is our non-instructional. We have three non-instructional retirements. I would like to say a particular note. I'd like to recognize and congratulate Rodney Pifko. Here's our district-wide driver messenger. He's retiring after 48 years and seven months. So congratulations, Rodney. We have seven non-instructional resignations. We have several appointments to non-instructional positions. We have two employees with the change of status due to upgrades in their title. Non-instructional stipends for leads, many full and part-time summer rec employees as we continue to hire them by the minute around here. And that is non-instructional.
And the donation was $5,755. It was for four separate arts and education programs. It was from the Sittoket PTA.
Can I just ask you a quick question on EE? So what are the new, what are the new totals for breakfast and for lunch for elementary and secondary?
Okay, so elementary lunch will be $3.10. Secondary lunch, $3.60. And breakfast, $2.35. That's 20 cents increase for each.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, can I have a related question regarding EE? So there was the impact from supply chain issue last year. Do you foresee we'll have the same issue coming year?
I hope not, but... We don't know. Yeah, I mean, we may do pretty well in the food service program, but I would imagine that will continue for a while. And hopefully, they will, as I mentioned, extend the free lunch for all. But as of right now, they have not done that. So, I mean, that's something that I've, I've hoped they would do for a long time, is just provide lunch. Even if they made it mandatory for the school district to do, just provide lunch for everybody. That's just my personal opinion. But I would imagine the supply chain issues will continue for a while.
Okay, thank you. VVV, recommendations from the committee on special education, subcommittee in 504 Accommodation Plan meetings, dates listed. And WWW, recommendations in the committee on preschool special education for the meetings of dates listed. And at this point in time, we would like to call a vote on that consensus. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstaining? Okay, one abstention. Motion carries. Thank you so much. And that will take us to our public comment period, which will be up to 30 minutes in length. We have two who have turned in their blue forms. Thank you for that. First up will be Ian Farber. Ian, if you could join us at the microphone, and please tell us your name.
Good evening. Ian Farber, resident and parent in the district. And I'd like to start off by congratulating Jen Solomon, Vinnie Vizzo, Dr. Scanlon, and Dr. Biscari. I'm sure you'll all do great work in the district in your roles. In many communities across our country and including our own, we have seen one tragedy after another. Sometimes in schools, sometimes in the larger community. It's in the form of harm directed towards others or harm inflicted on oneself. There are many contributing factors to those situations, but I'll stick to what we as a community in this setting can address. I'll start by acknowledging the excellent security team we have. They do a great job keeping our schools, staff, and students secure. And I look forward to reading the updated proposal on a security plan for the coming year. Like many safety issues, like many issues, safety requires a multi-layered approach, and the Three Village security team is a key part of that solution. However, it does go beyond that. I've heard firsthand, some say that schools should only focus on math, reading, and writing. I vehemently disagree. It's imperative that students continue to receive an education that not only enhances their knowledge of core subjects, but also an education that helps them to understand their emotions, how to respond to their emotions, and how to extrapolate that when interacting with their peers. As a community, we are only as safe as our most vulnerable. In conjunction, it is imperative that all students feel welcome and included, regardless of background, religion, country of origin, race, how they think, how they identify, or their romantic preference. To accomplish this, it is vital students see that they are not alone. Talking about and embracing our uniqueness is key. We must ensure that no student feels the need to hide what makes them unique. The multicultural festival at Minnesotki has been a great example of celebrating our uniqueness, and we should see more activities in that spirit. We've seen throughout history when people are othered, and it is never a good outcome. An attack on any one of us is an attack on all of us. In 2020, there was a great slogan going around, "We are all in this together." That shouldn't just be a slogan for one point in time. That should be a motto and a mantra for all time, because we truly are all in this together. We are all running up that hill together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next will be from Shoshana Hershkuwitz. If you could join us at the mic, please, and state your name and address.
I'm Shoshana Hershkuwitz. I live in South Sittoket, Ten Tractor Lane, the fourth village of the Three Village school system. First of all, congratulations to Dr. Scanlon and Dr. Biscari, and to Vinnie, and to Jen. Jen and I have known each other since the community music program that our kids went to when I taught in, and our synagogue. So I'm so excited to see how you serve this community. I know you're going to do wonderful things. I want to start off really quickly by just saying thank you. I think that this year was, the last couple of years have been a beast. And I think that this is literally the most thankless job. And it was really, really hard. Like, this was never meant to be reality TV. These are usually very quiet and, no offense, kind of boring. And when everyone's tuning in with popcorn, you know things are not the way they're supposed to be. So I, I thank you for continuing to show up, because I think that, you know, both as a parent and as an educator, the last couple of years have just been, you know, ones I hope we never, ever have to do again. I think, though, that the problems and the issues aren't going away. I think that this pandemic really laid bare a divide and showed how much work we still have to do. And, you know, the thing I came to say is, please keep going. Because I think that it is really, really easy at this stage of the game to just like throw your hands and be like, why? And I'm telling you, it's our kids. They matter and they see it. And I can tell you, because the moments, unlike other communities, where they're talking about banning Pride and putting these books away and banning books, my kids see that there's a Pride Club and that, like, anybody is welcome, regardless of where they come from, what they look like, how they worship, who they love. My kids see that in their schools. My children say their school buildings are their home. And kids notice. They notice when the adults have their backs. And teachers notice. Teachers notice when school boards trust them and empower them and recognize their expertise. And I think that in a lot of places that hasn't happened, but it did happen here. And as an educator, I want to thank you for that, because that is what keeps teachers in this profession, is in a time when people want to dial it in, knowing that the community and the school board has their backs makes teachers stay for the long haul. And I want to thank Mr. Blough. Mr. Blough, I wrote you 10 years ago after Sandy Hook, when I was worried about my own children, and you wrote me back right away, and you were really transparent and open with me, and I look forward to reading your plan. Because I know that safety isn't about metal detectors and war guns, because if it was, we'd be the safest nation on earth, not one that loses over 100 lives a day to gun violence. So mostly I want to say thank you, because this is really, really hard right now, as a parent, as an educator, as a school board member. But I think we have the tools to do this together. So please don't quit. Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right, well, should there be anything else to say? No? Thoughts, comments? All right, then. May I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Okay, have a great night.